Start with roll call, please.
Tressie Wells.
Aye.
Tressie Lawson.
Aye.
Tressie Marcus.
Tressie Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Ms. Salkum.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, so a report out on closed session from today. We received updates on the CSCEA negotiations and the RCTA negotiations. And we accepted the update and gave direction to staff where needed. All right, let's see, so welcome everyone. I did put in the chat information on how to access Spanish translation as well as information on the board agenda that you can access. And the in the need those. Necesita interpretación española por favor llama al no way base. Yet they also no way in the way they zero. Think of uno tres, si at they impression a. Other trace, yet they, yet they zero. Quattro uno pound para la contrasenye. Tambien encantado in el chat and gracias. Okay, so welcome everyone. I did want to say a special thank you to our teachers and staff. As you know, this is teacher and staff appreciation week, the week of May 3rd. So thank you so much for all that you've been doing this past year for students and families. We couldn't do this hard work without you. So just much appreciation from the whole board on behalf of the board. All right, let's see, I did put in the chat, I said, oh, in addition, in the chat, we have how to access the Google Doc if you would like to speak. And if you could put in a speaker card that helps us know who to call on and what order. And then we can also do any follow up that we might have with that. Tonight you'll get three minutes for your comments. And if you need Spanish translation, we'll give more time. And if your item is not on the agenda, we'll call you under oral communication. And as a reminder, the board meeting is for board business. With COVID, we have added regular community updates regarding opening plans and all of that. That and we sort of welcome your comments. We do have the chat feature that's open for members of the public to ask a clarifying question or make a short comment to the panelists. But we do ask that you use it sparingly because we're trying to pay attention to the meeting. And sometimes it's hard for us if there's a lot of chat coming in. But certainly, we do want to clarify any questions that you might have. And we'll try to get back to you this evening or a follow up. And then as a reminder, because all meetings are virtual, we'll be calling votes by roll call. All right, so thank you very much and changes to the agenda. I did have one item, 12.3, which is says it's a discussion, which is 2021 Plan for Educational Services for Expelled Students actually needs to get moved to action. We need to take action on that. So I'd like to move that to at the end of the action items. So we'll make that a 14 point whatever. And I was wondering if we could move 14.2 and 14.3 to consent. Those are personnel items, Wendy.
Yeah.
I don't know if the board members, I don't, we didn't get any comments on those. Any questions or comments, is that okay to move to consent? Okay, any other changes to the agenda? All right, do I have a motion to approve? Oh, roll call vote, please.
Tressie Wells.
Aye.
Tressie Lawson.
Aye.
Tressie Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Ms. Salkum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, so under oral communication, I believe we have two comments. I'm going to double check to see if any more have come in since an hour ago when I last checked. But why don't we go ahead and start with Erin Washburn and then Indra Hernandez, please.
So I don't see Erin in the attendees list yet, but I do see Indra, so I can go there.
Okay, let's bring up. What's that Janet?
Erin's here, it's listed under MX Washburn.
Okay.
There we go, there. Welcome. We can see you, Erin, but we can't hear you yet.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can.
And now you can't see me?
Well, we can see your photo. We don't actually see a live photo, but we see the one, yeah. So go ahead, please.
You can hear me, great. Okay, well, thank you, President McAvoy, thank you, everybody. And really, that's what this is about. I just wanted to say thank you. I was, I was getting ready to, to put in our, our, I'm the RCTA president. And I was writing up our agenda and just getting ready to, to put on our agenda. You know, we've got eighth grade scholarships coming up. We've got retirement stuff, parties coming up and, and different things like this. And it's like the first time where I was like, oh, my gosh, what a beautiful time of year. Like things are finally starting to turn around. And I see the, the light at the end of the tunnel and it, and I started reflecting back and thinking about what an awesome job RCSB has done. Our administration, from the time that we went into lockdown, you know, from the online lessons, the technology, the staff development in the beginning. And then when it was time to send kids back, like hiring extra custodians and teaching staff and, and doing all the testing and tracking and tracing. God bless you, Erin Keiko, for figuring out that recovery pandemic framework, air filtration systems, Plexiglas on desks, you know, it just, the list went on. And honestly, when I saw everything that had to be done, I was like, how, how is this even possible? But our administration did it. So thank you so much for, for making it happen. And as we move into the future, thank you for the extra staff that's going to be coming on board to help get our kids up to speed. And the lower class sizes and those lower grades is going to be amazing. And we just really appreciate the focus on equity. So thank you and that's it, have a great night.
Thank you very much, Erin, really appreciate you coming with those words of gratitude. And yes, our administration has done a lot of work when you think about the whole year, as have all the teachers. So thank you for your service as a teacher and the RCTA president. And of course, our classified staff as well, it's really taken a whole team. So thank you very much for the acknowledgement of, of where we've been together. And excited to look forward to next year, so thank you. All right, next up, we have Indra. And I also want to ask, I see that Jennifer Tanti put in for a comment and just said, public comment. Could you, if you have the ability, put in the chat to the panelists which agenda item this is for? And if it's not for any agenda item, you can just let me know that it's for now oral communication as well. All right, Indra, welcome.
Oh, hi Alicia, hi all board members and Mr. Baker as well. And everybody in the Redwood City School District. You know, I'm with Erin. We are very thankful for everything that has happened. We have learned a lot during the pandemia, things that we thought it was impossible that we were gonna be doing. You know, we learn a lot. I'm very thankful for the tech department, every single one of the guys there in the tech. Thank you very much, you know, Kyle and all the members there, Carlos, Ken, Jesse, everybody, you know, it's, it's amazing how, how they were very helpful to all of us. Thank you so much. And I wanna, I wanna share that we have been using the Mathshelf program, as you guys know, for the preschoolers. Some of the classes, we continue using it because we pay from our own to have the kids using Mathshelf and it has been a blessing. The kids are doing so well because during the pandemia, they have the chance to work Mathshelf at home. And now that we are back in the classroom, we can see the progress. We thought that somebody else was doing the assignments for them. But we can see that the kids are doing excellent. And we, I am asking for this Mathshelf program to continue for the following year. I hope they can renew our subscription because this is great for the children. I have shared with you guys how my classroom has been using the Mathshelf program. And honestly, I'm very thankful for that. I, I wanna share more, but you know, we're preparing some, some song with the children that they having such a good time. We're talking about plants and we're doing some gardening. So the kids are doing so good. They are talking to each other, playing together. We, Edna was very thoughtful of giving us all the PPE equipment. And she doesn't hesitate in, in giving things that we need. So we are very thankful for that. And thank you all for your support. We continue working for the Redwood City School District, it's a privilege. I already turned 30 years in the district. And I'm very blessed that part of my life, I have been devoted to the Redwood City School District to service the children. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you very much. I, I know this puts a smile on all of our faces. You cannot see all the panelists, but we have board members and district staff. And everybody is just smiling. And I know that, I think many or most of us have been in your classroom. And when you speak, I just think of your children. And just how wonderful you are with them. So thank you very much for your comments tonight. And thank you for all you're doing. All right, so our next speaker is Jennifer Tanti. And Jennifer, you have three minutes. Once you get started, you bet, welcome.
Thanks, my name is Jennifer Tanti and I teach seventh and eighth grade social studies at Clifford. And my message is just along the same lines of Erin and Indra. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board and Redwood City School District and admin for all of the incredible support that we've received since the beginning of the pandemic. I was just absolutely blown away by how, by how organized our development team was and how they gave us, you know, the first two weeks, just get ourselves together to, to learn new platforms. They had, you know, planning days for us and they had everything ready for the, the kids. I've seen other schools, districts near me. I have friends who are in other school districts who have just totally struggled through this whole pandemic. And I have just been, I have felt so fortunate to be part of Redwood City School District. Everything that I've needed, I have never had to know, whether it's, you know, a program that I want for my kids or, you know, a grading function that I want. I've been supported by my admin, I've been supported by the development team. And I just, I just wanted to say thank you and how really proud I am to be a part of the Redwood City School District. That's it.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for making the time to come tonight and let us know that. We really appreciate hearing from you, so. And it's funny, you know, the way I started was to thank our teachers and staff. And it's really nice to have you come and thank our administration because I know how hard they've all worked. So thank you very much. All right, so I'm hoping we're on to the next agenda item. I'm hoping that Millie, who we're recognizing tonight, has been able to get on. And I think Mary Lee, one of our wonderful former teachers, was going to help her.
President McAvoy?
Oh, yes.
Millie's connected.
I'm sorry, what's that, Ellie?
She's connected.
Oh, she is.
We're on.
Oh, you're on, there you are.
We're here. We're here, hi, everybody.
Hey, that's great.
That's wonderful. Now, I wish we could show your face as I speak, but when I speak, I think we're gonna see me, which I'm kind of bummed about. Kyle, I don't know if there, is there a way to show Millie while I speak? By any chance, can you pin her?
Um, I, I can try.
Let's, let's do that, because I'd rather have her seen while we speak about her than me.
You don't have to show Millie.
And Mary Lee, hi, thank you for helping Millie get on.
Nice to see you.
We'll give it just a, just a 30 seconds and see if Kyle can do this, otherwise.
Yeah, he got it. Yes.
There we are. Hi, everybody.
Hi, well, Millie, welcome. It's so nice to have you here. And I just want to let you know that Mary Lee and a few others, let us know what important month this is for you. And we wanted to recognize you tonight. And so I know Eliana Garcia, she did a wonderful job talking to your daughters.
Yeah, there it is.
Oh, great, you showed that off, yeah?
Beautiful.
Great, and I know she dropped off.
Lovely.
Award, that's wonderful. So let me, let me say a little bit about you for our audience, because not everybody knows how amazing you are. So let me go ahead and read a little bit about you. And then if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love that. All right, so Redwood City School District's privilege to honor Mildred Millie Cole for her outstanding lifelong dedication to education and the Redwood City community. Millie will be turning 100 years old on May 22nd, 2021. And I might add, you do not look a day over 70, is all I could say. So I am amazed at this, it really is amazing, this is wonderful. Millie, as she is best known, was born on May 22nd, 1921, in Salt Lake City, Utah, and moved to Redwood City in the 1940s. She married Ted Cole on May 22nd, 1942, on her 21st birthday. Together, they have five children, 12 grandchildren, 14 great grandchildren, and one great, great grandchild. And I know many, many friends, like Mary Lee, who's sitting next to you, and many others have reached out once they saw that you were getting recognized tonight. They wanted to send their congratulations and good wishes to you.
Thank you so much, that's very nice.
Millie graduated from Santa Fe State University in January of 1970 and began teaching at Selby Lane in September of that same year. She taught for 11 years, officially retiring in 1981. While at Selby Lane, she taught regular first grade for two years, then taught bilingual first grade class for nine years with her colleague teacher, Eddie Trujillo. After teaching at Selby Lane, she retired to travel the world with her husband. Over her love for children and for the school setting kept her very close to the district. After her retirement, she turned, she returned to serve as a tutor at Taft School for several more years. While Deputy Superintendent Wendy Kelly was principal at North Star Academy, Millie helped then Principal Kelly start the school's junior optimist club. And I might add, this was not in the written part, but I did hear from Dennis McBride, who let me know that you also helped start junior optimist clubs at McKinley and Kennedy Middle School as well. And I imagine more. And I know that you started, what do they call, octagon?
Octagon.
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 I've had a long day today, octagon clubs at local high schools as well. And yeah, so let me go back to the reading because I'm going off script now. Okay, Millie's love for her community has allowed her to be a longtime member of the Redwood City Optimist Club, as well as the Woodside Terrace Optimist Club. While living at Woodside Terrace, Millie participated in their annual Christmas celebration at Fair Oaks, which consisted of visiting students in each classroom to give them candy and cookies. She coordinated the Woodside High School Octagon Club for many years. And as I said before, I think also Menlo Atherton and Sequoia High School is what Dennis McBride let me know about. Many students continue to stay in touch with Millie after profound impact she has had in their lives. 10 years ago, Millie was awarded as a Sequoia Award, which recognized her as a super volunteer and an active member of the Redwood City community. Millie continues to be extremely active at her local church. Millie lives on her own and enjoys going to her local supermarket in her mobile scooter. That's great. The Redwood City School Board, Superintendent Baker and the administration would like to honor Millie for her dedication to students at the Redwood City School District and the Redwood City community. We're honored and pleased to celebrate Millie and her lifelong accomplishments in serving the Redwood City community. On behalf of the Redwood City School District community, happy 100th birthday, Millie. And thank you for your outstanding service.
Thank you.
As an educator and active member of the Redwood City community.
Thank you. Found out that Eliana was one of her octagon kids. Yes, she was, Woodside High School octagon.
Very good, Ellie, great.
Yeah, that's great. And I think my daughter, Marissa, was in your junior optimist group in the middle school. The one that was started by you. Would anyone else like to say anything?
Just thank you, thank you for the honor. That is so nice of you to think of me. I don't need an award because my award was doing something I enjoyed every minute. And it's a wonderful school district, I'm so proud of you. And people don't really know how hard you work. I do. Thank you, thank you.
Great, very good.
Thank you so much, wise words, we appreciate it. All right, well, Mary Lee, thank you very much for helping us get Millie on and congratulations again. Have a wonderful May month.
There you go, thank you.
All right, good night, Millie, good night, Mary Lee. All right. Well, that was a great way to start the meeting, that's for sure. All right, so Kyle, do we need to do anything different with the?
No, we're.
Okay. Okay, terrific, all right, let me get back on agenda. I always get so excited when we have the community staff recognition, student recognition. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the bond program consent items.
Don't move.
A second.
Roll call vote?
Tressie Wells.
Aye.
Tressie Lawson.
Aye.
Tressie Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Ms. Salkum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, no action items for the bond tonight. So we're on to, let's see, no, we didn't move, yeah, that's fine, okay. All right, we're on to 12.1.
All right, great, Kyle, if you would put the slideshow up. Great, we're going to talk this evening about our update on our reopening plans. And this is just the beginning of the conversation that we'll be having in future board meetings. But prior to us beginning with this item, I have Principal Catherine Rivera with us tonight, who is going to give us an update on Orion and the Mandarin Immersion Program of what is occurring at that site. So Kyle, if you could go to that slide would be wonderful. And then give Catherine her access. And I think Catherine, I think you do have access, your, go ahead. Welcome, Catherine, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Yeah, this is exciting for us to get to this point and be able to share this information. So I'm Principal Catherine Rivera of Orion Alternative School, home to two unique and innovative programs here in Redwood City, Mandarin Immersion Program and our parent participation program. And I just wanted to start off, and it almost sounds like the Grammys or one of our award ceremonies. But I really just want to thank Echo Erin and Echo Indra and our speakers, just thanking our board for your stewardship of our community this year and really making a lot of hard decisions, but with an equity lens. So thank you to our trustees for this year. Dr. Baker, I also want to thank you for your professional, but also personal support this year and the last quarter of a century. I appreciate also all your support and, and Assistant Deputy Superintendent Wendy Kelly and Liz. All my frantic emails and text messages, thank you as well for all your support. And a big shout out to our amazing parent community who has made this last week happen. And I can't wait to share the pictures in a moment because our parent community is extremely supportive and caring and ensures that we are also reaching out to families with an equity lens. And then huge thank you to our staff, the amazing team that we have at Orion Alternative. They are the people who make the ship run every day, they are professional, they're caring, and the love they show everybody, that's, it's an amazing group of people that I work with. And I'm really honored to work with all of our team members, all of our staff and our teachers. So exciting that we have a lot of students back at our campus, starting April 8th. And looking at the numbers, you can see we have in our Mandarin Immersion families, the majority of the families are, the students are on campus with a few remaining in distance learning. And that includes independent study. And in our parent participation model, we have 159 and 120 remaining in distance learning. Something that we are implementing this Monday, May 10th, is full day instruction four days a week. So it's Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday, from 8:15 to 2:30. And you can see in the Mandarin Immersion Program grades one through five kindergarten. We weren't able to move all kinder in the Mandarin Immersion Program to full day because you can see there's a number of families still choosing distance learning. And then in our parent participation program at Orion, we have many kids coming back in a hybrid model. And in our second grade, we do have a second grade class that has, it's, it's not shown here in the chart, but we do have enough students in a second grade class that we will also be coming back from 8:15 to 2:30. And then we, I recently did a family survey for our families that are, have chosen distance learning, just to get one more temperature read recently, to see if any of the distance families would be willing to return for the last month of the school. But I think families have made choices over the last several months and, and have organized their lives for the past year. And so our families were pretty steady in distance learning in the most recent survey of continuing in distance learning. So we have a lot of students back, so anybody who wants to come back has, has been able to come back. And every day, we're adding a few more families, which is really exciting. So I feel really, I feel really proud of the work that our office staff has done and our outreach, our TOSA, and then the teachers and communicating with our families and giving them the confidence to feel good about coming back.
Did you want to go on to the next slide?
I think so, just to show what we're doing while we're back.
Go ahead, Kyle.
And so our focus, bringing students back, was to ensure that they felt safe, that they felt welcome, that they sense of belonging, that identity as students with their peers. And so teachers have done a tremendous job doing hands-on activities. So we have our language arts and reading and book clubs, but really focusing on hands-on social studies and science with our integrated units. And we've, our teacher, you can see Ms. Conti in first grade, doing a sealed drawn label. Love to see the drawn label and keeping the rigor high with high levels of academic vocabulary and getting the kids involved. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And our, so we're really going to teach, have this more flexibility. I'm doing the, focusing on the investigations in the classroom. So we've got Ms. Abara's class and the, it's not pictured here, but they're doing the makey makeys from the maker. So bringing some of the materials from the bakery into the classroom and keeping them safe and sanitizing them. And geology, we got our construction going on. And a large part of our campus, so Ms. Tracy Christopherson making good use of the construction site rocks for her second graders to, to be geologists with local materials. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And our Mandarin Immersion students, it was amazing to do, see distance learning for quite a bit of time, but to be on campus, to really thrive for all students in an immersion setting, it's really important just to get the, the, not just the academic language, but the social opportunities. So our immersion students, immersion teachers providing lots of hands-on opportunity as well. And giving children opportunities to engage with the learning materials, make it relevant. And giving children opportunities to engage with the learning materials, make it relevant. Go ahead. Next slide. And then giving opportunities for turn and talk while maintaining social distance. So it started off as six feet social distance when we first came back to school. But we are preparing for the three foot social distancing. So making sure kids still have the opportunity for partner talk, collaborative conversations to build up their academic and social language in an immersion setting. And then a final slide. Is playtime, very important part of our days as making sure that we have a good chunk of time for outdoor play, a long snack period for all grade levels in our different zones. And we are able to do, we have seven different play zones and we're able and under three rotations. And we're able to do this because we have parents who are, we, who we have hired as yard duty. So parents have gone through the hiring and onboarding process and even working just very short amount of time, but they're able to support us in doing yard duty and care for the kids as well as making our drop off in the mornings and our pickup in the afternoons goes smoothly because we have our parent volunteers and our staff out there. And we've got it down to a science where that the waiting is minimal and to get kids in and out of their cars and onto campus as safe and as comfortable as possible. And to make it all possible to be on site. So we're really excited about being back on site and moving to full day for many of our classes next week.
Great. Catherine, that's wonderful. It's great that you're able to do that and bring some children back full day. And the other piece that is very enlightening is you have so many parents that have come to you and they're now working out as, you know, additional support for you through being a member of the Redwood City School District. So that is really a feather in your cap. Thank you for going out and reaching out to the parent community. Because I know that drop off and that pickup time is very crucial, especially just that one time that I did it. And it wasn't very many cars. It was, it takes quite a bit of time. And then you've got the construction going on at that site too. So that is another challenge that you're faced with. So thanks so much. I really appreciate that. Board members, do you have any questions, comments for Principal Rivera?
Why don't I just say on behalf of the board, thank you very much. And it's, it's really great that you've been able to creatively get kids back as long, you know, as much as you can in a day. So we really appreciate that. And, and I do know that, you know, one question I think we've gotten from some parents, and I'll just say it publicly, is that you know, because different classrooms and different schools have different numbers of kids who have come back in person and kids who are in distant learning. Where we have been able to, we've tried to extend the day to a more normal instructional day of in-person. But that has not been possible at every school site or with every classroom because we do have some cases where there's two cohorts, one in-person and one at home. So anyway, so thank you for, I know, I know it's a lot of work from the principals and from teachers and the administrators to basically put together all these schedules. So it's exciting to see that pretty much every student, well, every student who's wanted to come back in person, I believe, is able to come back in person. And our district is pretty huge. So, great.
Thanks again, Catherine. Really appreciate it. You and your staff. And a great job.
Thank you.
So the next portion we're going to start out with before we go on to reopening is what the principals are involved in right now. Graduation and promotions. So Kyle, the next slide, please. So we had a meeting. Wow, was it last week or the week before where as soon as the guidelines came out from CDPH, California Department of Public Health, and then of course it came down to the County Department of Public Health, and they put together the guidelines along with the County Office of Education on what graduation and promotion ceremonies could look like for the county of San Mateo. So when we started talking about this and making it aware to our site administrators, I thought it was only going to be our administrators who had eighth graders. No, everybody came. They were all at this meeting and everyone is doing some type of in-person graduation or promotion ceremony. There's a couple of schools for their fifth grade are going to still do it virtual, but the majority are in person. So they are going to be taking place on June 8th, 9th and 10th. Board members, you are going to receive a schedule. The difficult part about the schedule, because we have a short timeframe and because of all the protocols that we need to follow, many of them are during the same day or the same time. So when you get that schedule, you can determine how you would like to participate. If you participate, you will participate along. Thank you, Kyle. Along with the site administrators, of course, with them, you will be social distance of six feet from the others that are with you, other adults. And you will need to be wearing your mask at all times. You will have to follow the protocols for, you know, the hygiene of having, we'll make sure that you have some, some liquid cleaner for your hands and so forth, but there will be no. We normally, you know, give a certificate and then we shake a hand. No, we're not doing any of that. That's totally out of this venue, this go around. But the principals and the assistant principals at the school sites are doing an amazing job of putting some type of graduation or promotion ceremony in place for the students who are leaving their schools in the fifth grade or the eighth grade. So I'm very pleased to announce that our maintenance department is also working very carefully and closely with each site administrator to make sure that everything is in place. We did have to order some additional chairs to be rented for the different venues. I think we had to order another outside speaker for a couple of schools, rent them. But it is all going to work like clockwork because Martin Cervantes and his team are really working closely with each site administrator to make sure that everything is in place when they have their ceremony and then take off from there and need to go somewhere else probably in the same day within a couple hours. So when we are sending that out to you at tomorrow morning, Eliana will get it out to you. And any questions you have, you can ask me on Friday about it, about the schedule. All right. But it's in the works and it's moving forward. And I know all the site administrators are working closely with, you know, their staff and their, and their families on what this is going to look like. Is there any questions regarding the graduation and the promotions? It's, it's something that every one of them felt it needed to happen this year. It needed to occur. All right. Let's move forward, please, Kyle. So now we're going to talk about the beginning of the planning for 2122. And I just want to reiterate again on this slide, we are coming back in person pre-K through eighth grade beginning this fall. Instructional schedule is going to mimic or mirror the 2019, 2020 school year. So the minutes are back in place. We are moving forward with how it had looked prior to the shelter in place. Our early dismissals will still be Thursday, like we've had for several years now. And that early dismissal time is for our teacher preparation for their planning. And we will continue to follow those four pillars that are outlined in the San Mateo County of Education Pandemic Recovery Framework. Now that framework changes as the county, our public health department changes their guidelines and works closely with San Mateo County Office of Ed. Those will, that framework will change as it changes. Next slide, please. So we will, at this point in time, it'll still be three feet physical distancing between students. That's as of right now. So that's what we're planning for because that's what the framework indicates. There will still be six feet between adults and students. They, we will avoid gatherings and mixing of groups. Definitely will continue with our hand washing, our hand washing stations. And we will provide optional COVID-19 testing for our staff. Next slide. Want to talk a bit about the calendar. This calendar is up on our website. This calendar that you have before you was approved in March of 2019. The first day of school is Wednesday, August 18th. We are going to have our maze days. The week prior to that, we talked about it at the principal's meeting today, where we'll have parents coming in different groups to the school to get student schedule, class assignment, other items that pertain to coming back to school this fall. We will have our fall break from November 22nd to the 26th with the conferences. And then we, on November 22nd and 23rd, that's the highlight of when we that, that portion of the calendar is during Thanksgiving break. And our winter break is also December 20th through the 31st. And students return on January 4th. And that Monday prior, this January 4th, I believe, is a Tuesday. If I'm correct, and Monday is a professional development day for our teachers and our staff. There is a mid-winter break, February 21st to the 25th. And we will have spring break from the 20, March 28th through April 1st. And the last day of school is June 9th. And again, this calendar for all parents who would like to see it and maybe download it and have a copy of it. It's on the website under calendars. Go to that link and you have the calendar there that you can either download, make a copy, send it to your phone, whatever you'd like to do. So are there any questions? You approved this back on March of 2019. Okay. Next slide. So what we have been talking about in meetings with our principals and also in individual meetings with each of you that I've spoken to is what are the student supports going to look like? And we've just started that momentum going and starting to plan for it, utilizing the S R 2 and S R 3 dollars. Those are the dollars that are coming from the federal government. So we are going to reduce class size reduction to 25 students to one teacher in grades K 1 and 2. The plan for doing this is to do it and roll it out not only for the next school year, which is the 2122 school year, but also for the 2223 and the 2324. Using those one-time dollars and with assistance from site administrators, from cabinet and a lot of assistance from our CBO Priscilla to make sure that, you know, we utilize the dollars and have enough money to carry it through. That's the plan that we're going to be moving forward with. Another thing that we heard from with, from our principals and teachers who are at the primary grade levels of kindergarten, second grade, is there needed to be some additional support with a reading specialist at each of their sites that have kindergarten first and second. So each of those sites will be receiving a reading specialist for kindergarten through second. And then principals did say, well, we have our students that, you know, third grade on and up that have some needs also, that our teachers may need to have some support when they're getting students in the third, the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, the seventh, the eighth grade that are reading low grade level. How can I support them? When it's not normally at my grade level where I would teach a child how to read or teach a child how to read, to learn. So these five district upper grade reading specialists will be rotating through different school sites in the district. We are also having a therapeutic counselor for each school. The data that is shown not only from Stanford, but also from other entities throughout the nation is that the social emotional piece of what children have been going through for the last 14 months, one needs to really consider and take seriously as students come back to school full time. So there will be a therapeutic counselor at each of our school sites. And as you see this list right here, they are being, they are being flown on EdJoin, which is a site where we seek to advertise our employment opportunities to work in this great district. And Wendy Kelly and her team are already moving forward in doing some of the paper screening, the interviewing and hiring. And then we're hoping that we will have a health clerk for each school upon the approval of CSEA for the next school year. The next slide, please, Kyle. For those of you board members who have been with us for the last, you know, five, you know, 10 years, you will remember even prior to 10 years with, and that's only a Maria that's here with us right now, when we started the K 8 schools. The K 8 schools were given a halftime PE person to work with sixth, seventh and eighth grades. Where our true middle schools, that does not occur. They have assigned PE teachers that are paid from the district funding. We have gone in the direction to no longer put the burden on the school sites, the K 8s, and we have 138 that has hired an additional halftime to complete that halftime person that we gave to a full-time. And have them have to either search through their own discretionary funds or ask PTA, PTO to fund the other halftime in this sixth or eighth grade in PE to have one FTE. So that's no longer going to exist. We are going to pay this out of those dollars that we're getting from the federal government for each of our K 8 sites and for the 38, the 138 site that we have. So PTAs, PTOs or discretionary dollars at each of the school sites will not be utilized to pay the other half of that position to make it one FTE. It was also mentioned that we continue with our campus supervisor at each school next year. Right now, as we, we look at what is taking place for next year, of course, the social distancing, of course, the washing stations, right now, we still have the zones where kids need to be. That all may change, you know, as of June 15th when we open up. I don't know what that means for schools in California opens up on June 15th as the governor is projecting. So a campus supervisor will be at each school site next, next year. And then we, whoops, Kyle, if you Google back for a second. And then we are also going to hire two district-wide guest teachers. And Wendy Kelly did that this school year also for us to really help fill in where there are some substitute needs and we can't find a substitute teacher. Library books is a big issue for us to, to replace the library books that have been damaged or lost. And so library technicians have created a list from each of their school sites of books that need to be reordered. So at this point in time, I don't know the cost. It could be a hundred to $200,000. That's what the estimate has been given, but the lists are coming in on a regular basis. Now you probably are thinking, and I know Mike, you had a question of how are we going to evaluate this and look at it and see what we're getting for the additional personnel that we're hiring. So what we'll doing, what we will be doing with each of these positions is looking at data very carefully. I mean, the pieces with the reading specialist, you can look at the data quite often. The pieces with the therapeutic counselors, what I have asked the Gardner Center to do is to please do a project with us to determine how the effectiveness of these therapeutic counselors. So the Gardner Center will be working very closely with the Redwood City School District as we So the Gardner Center will be working very closely with the River City School District as we go on to the other. Items that are fun that you saw on the previous slide. If you could go back to the previous slide before this one, Kyle. Thank you. Of the class size reduction, it'll be also, it'll not also be, it'll be data, it'd be qualitative and of the anecdotal. Because I want to get the anecdotal data, data relief. From the teachers and also from the parents. And then the Gardner Center has also agreed to do some of the analysis for us in that. So there has to be some type of information, whether it be qualitative or quantitative, to tell us. How are we doing? Is the money that we're spending from the federal government really making a difference on what is happening with our children? As we move through this process. And remember, as we look at this, we're good, even though we have planned out for it. Especially when you're looking at the class size reduction. For a three year period, you, we really want to look at that carefully because after that three years. Those dollars are no longer with us. We've planned for it for three years, but 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 they're the. I don't think the feds are going to come back and say, here's. Couple more million dollars for you so you can continue, but we are going to be keeping on top of it and then be talking about our next steps will be. So as I said, this is just the beginning of the conversations that we've been having with not only our administrators, but also with. I've had with each of you and with some of our teachers. That are really looking forward to getting the additional support that they can have in their, not only in their classrooms and also with. People helping them with developing and modeling lessons in the area of language arts and mathematics. And then the other piece that we're looking at too is with the NUA work is to make sure that we continue the NUA and what that looks like for. When you're looking at developing lessons and you look at it through the equity lens, what does that look like now compared to what it did previously? And as we get new teachers in. Into the district, they're going to have to become trained in NUA. So we're thankful that we have. Whitney Eaton, who's with us, who is one of our teachers on special assignment, who will continue doing that, but we're gonna, I'll be talking to Linda. She just. Sent me a document today. Thank you, Linda. I read it right before the board meeting. But then there's some other things I want to add to it. Once I talk to the board members to assist us next year. But this is the beginning. It's not where, it's not the full picture. And then you will see more and more at each of our board meetings. A discussion that we're going to need to have and which I've told each of you about is. When you're looking at. The guidelines, the guidelines talk about learning gaps, learning gaps, learning loss, learning gaps, learning mitigation. But it also talks about to look at your school sites. And look at your, your leaders, who will be the principals. And what is it that they see that they need that maybe we're not seeing as a school district? And you plan X amount of dollars and you give them those X amount of dollars. To do as they with, to do as they would like to do with. But at the same time, have a plan of what's, what's the. What is it? What are they going to do? And what's that outcome going to be? And so we're still in the discussion stage with principals cabinet with also. Priscilla, who is on cabinet, to see what that dollar amount would be because each school's a bit different. You may not have. For example, you may not have a lot of English learners, but you may be in a different direction where you have something else, where you need some additional support. And so we need to see what that support would be when it calculates to dollars. So we're working on that piece too right now, but we haven't come to any. True figure amount at this point in time. Any questions? As you all know, Liz is working on the LCAP and also the. The ELO plan, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Plan and. She'll be bringing that to, well, some of you sit on that LCAP. I think it's, it's. It's Mike and it's Lisa that sit on that. And so you went through a process last night. And so we're looking at that information and with that information, there's dollars that will be. Noted in the LCAP and there's also dollars that will be noted in the ELO plan that, you know, the ELO is to kind of. Enhance or complement one another, if I'm not mistaken, Liz, in in that regard. So more to come on that too.
I was wondering, do we have any extra monies going to professional development or coaching? I know you mentioned the National Urban Alliance. Work and and Linda, I haven't had a chance to look at what you sent, but I will. Are we going to be anyway? Cause like, you know, I I know that one of the things that we've heard throughout the equity conscious work that we've been doing. Is the desire for ongoing sort of professional development, coaching. You know, particularly as we bring in more culturally relevant practices, student voice, all of that into the classroom.
Right.
And it's not just a one and done, right? There really needs to be that ongoing. So where is that going to be in the budget?
That is going to be part of S R two and S R three. It's going to be part of that. And then I, and I don't know. How I have not. I didn't, I did not stay through the whole LCAP presentation last night in the state to see what. The outcome was of last evening. But I know some of that probably could come out of ELO, it could come out of LCAP, but then we've got S R two and S R three dollars. So we do have our TOSSs too, which I haven't spoken about yet, which I will do at the next board meeting we present. Because the TOSSs are very important to us because they are the ones that are going to provide the professional development. And then we're going to have, we will need to seek additional outside PD, for example, from. From NUA on, on definitely to continue on the roadmap that we want to in that arena. And by continuing on, there needs to be some dollars there so we can talk with, definitely with. Yvette Jackson and also Maria, what are they going to do to continue to. Enhance what we as administrators are moving forward with. And how can we continue to have Stephanie and Robert work with us in a fashion? And I'm sure the board members, if you don't know who Stephanie and Robert are, they're great consultants that work with NUA. And they've been doing a great job with with the work they've been doing with our, our staff. So yes, is the answer to your question, Lisa. You just don't see it here right now. And this is a whole piece yet. I'm going to bring it to you in pieces. And as we talk individually and you give me feedback and as I talk to principals and they talk to their staffs and to their. School site councils, I bring that back and. Determine what would be the best recommendation moving forward from all the information that I've heard. Anyone else?
I wanted to just say thanks for bringing up the outcomes and how, you know, that's going to be part of the planning there. Cause at least for me personally, that'll really help, help me understand, you know, how effective are these decisions, you know, what are they doing? And and the other thing that I think that'll give us the opportunity to do is then be able to look and say. You know, are there, is there more need one place or another? Like, how should we be balancing? Cause right now it is sort of an even distribution. You know, where we're sort of bringing everything up to even, but that may not be the case that's needed to get to the outcome that we're looking for. So. I appreciate that you. You know, that you brought that up and that'll be part of that. Cause that'll, again, like I said, it'll help understand. And then quickly, I wanted to say, thank you, Principal Rivera, for presenting Orion. That was great to see. And I am excited for graduation. So I didn't want to let that slip by without. Thank you for that, that update there. So I'm looking forward to that schedule, but um. I'm glad we're looking forward to next year. It's getting on to the, resuming the calendar as we've known it for years, I think is going to be. Unsettling at first maybe, but it'll be refreshing for sure as we adjust to it. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to that.
And you know, we have started and we we talked about it today at principal's meeting of, you know, our volunteers. And Wendy's going to put out a memo to each of the site administrators about volunteers because. We've been, you know, in school for several weeks now. And as long as a volunteer is vaccinated, as long as it's a regular volunteer, it's not a volunteer that just comes in. One time and then doesn't come back for a couple of weeks and comes back again. But if it's a regular volunteer, we want to make sure they're, they're with us. They fill out that wellness sheet, you know, when they come. And they, we're also going to ask them if they wouldn't mind, you know, taking a COVID test. So just, it's optional. That part is optional, just like it's optional for our staff. But we have that in place and we hope to start that relatively soon too. We talked about it today. And so want to move forward with that because our volunteers are definitely so appreciated and do provide. A real connection between the school sites and the communities.
Just to clarify, did you say that the volunteers would have to be fully vaccinated?
Yes. Any other questions? Perfect. Well, expect to have more at each board meeting because as I said previously, as I receive information. From each of you, when we do our individual meetings and then with the principals and the principals of their communities, then I put that all together. And that's when I make my recommendation to the board to hear all pieces from all sides. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. So our next agenda item is twelve point two recommendation for science curriculum grades six through eight. I know we got information on this. I don't know if folks had questions or if there was more you wanted to say about it.
John, do you want me to just talk or did you want?
Oh, sorry. I was looking at, I have two screens going. I'm trying to look at, make sure that we're no comments over here. We had started prior to COVID with a pilot and then, you know. Shelter in place came and went into distance learning, but we have continued on with. Working on the pilot that we had selected to try out. So I believe the recommendation tonight, listen, you can take it from here, is from that information that we have received over a period of time. Which now has been quite a while.
That's correct. We have a very extended pilot season. Yes. So that came with history, social studies that still hasn't quite made up their mind yet in sixth or eighth grade. So our pilot teachers take this challenge very seriously, right? Because they are trying to determine if piloting something through a pandemic is an actual. Experience that will carry through into back in person learning. And so there's been a lot of conversation and a lot of thought and a lot of meetings and time put into making this decision. And so the science pilot teachers have made the decision to recommend Amplify as a sixth through eighth grade science curriculum. For next year. And so there will be the period of public comment. And so we are looking for a place to house the, the actual hard copy materials. Where it's safe for people to come in to visit. And so we're working on that. But there's also links for people to take a look at the digital materials as well. So all of that is available and we'll be making that easily accessible through our website with the information. And in a month, we will bring back that final recommendation to you based on any feedback or concerns that we might get from the public. I believe the Jen, June sixteenth is the date we will come back and make a recommendation if we should actually. Move ahead with the purchase, but right now they've made the recommendation at least for. The review and the public comment of the Amplify materials. And I'd be happy to, at the next meeting, if you do have questions about any of the processes or the formats or. Supplementary materials, because I know there was a question about what kind of support is there for students who may be at different reading levels or may need some differentiation of instruction. To to give more specific information about that, if that's of interest to the committee or to the, to the board.
Or if you would like us to bring in some of the, you know, the teachers who did pilot it and talk.
As well. Yeah, just let us know.
All right. Any other questions right now? I I do look, I mean, I imagine all of us look forward to seeing the links. I think that'll be helpful for us to kind of cruise it. And I know that some of you have middle school students. Maybe you've been seeing some of the Amplify this year. I don't know during the pilot. Have they, because they have been using it in the classroom, right? Yeah. Great. All right. We have one question in the chat, but maybe somebody can can answer that. I don't think that has to do with middle school.
You're talking about what, you read the math for twenty one?
So there will be a pilot beginning next year. Well, it'll be a two year process for the elementary grades. And that is a process that will start slowly because the framework is still being developed. And the materials have not yet been recommended, but we're gathering together a group of interested teachers beginning next year. To do a deep dive into the framework as and the recommendations. So that the following year, we're really prepared to begin to pilot the math materials and that will be K five.
All right. So any other questions from board members, comments? All right. Well, thank you to the teachers who do the extra work on all of this. We really appreciate their work. And I think, you know, my opinion is always that I defer to the teachers. They, they know best, right? So I think we generally go with the recommendation. Okay, let's see. So if, I think that's it on this agenda item. And that's all the discussion items. We moved twelve point three to action. So do I have a motion to approve the consent items? And as a reminder, fourteen point two and fourteen point three moved to consent. Maria? The second. Janet, second. Roll call vote.
Rusty Wells. Rusty Lawson.
I.
Rusty Marcus.
Hi.
Vice President D. Slocum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right, we're on to fourteen point one, which is an action item and it's the recommendation, Measure T Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Membership and duration terms of service.
Yes, thank you. So what you have before you is, it's hard to believe all this time has passed, right? And we're, we're at the point right now where we have a couple of members that are terming out of membership. On the school bond community oversight committee. And those two members are. Richard, Richard Delfts, who his term expires June thirtieth. And then Elizabeth Flago, who's one of our parents, it expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one also. So we know we have to go out and look for additional applicants to be on the bond oversight committee. For the next couple of years at least. So what we want to do, not only while we're requesting that we have that. Manner of going out and soliciting, but that we also expand the group from seven to nine. And the reason from seven to nine is. Many times. We struggle getting a quorum with just the seven. And so there have been a couple of times that we've canceled the meeting because we didn't have a quorum. So at least if we had nine, it'd be a lot easier, easier for us to get to the core. So they asked tonight is definitely to. Replace our, our two individuals who terms expire. And also to add on another two members to the C B O committee. To make it nine members as opposed to the seven that we have right now.
Any questions about that? Any concerns with the recommendation? Makes sense.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that I think the other thing that the committee chair had pointed out was that. Adding four now would give them more overlap with the existing members. So that instead of having to replace five next time and have essentially a new committee, we'd have a little bit more overlaps. That, that was also part of the reason. And I want to say thanks to all of them. I mean, I've only been to one, one committee meeting, but they, this is their third term. They've been doing this since two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen. Meeting however many times a year to review. They've been doing this since 2016 or 2017, uh, meeting however many times a year to review the, you know, to how the bond is going and how the, how the money's being spent to provide that citizen oversight. So I, I don't know. I'm impressed. I thought it was great to, great to meet them. And I just want to at least say thanks.
And all that, they're, they're very diligent in their questions and the information that they ask for. And so I really appreciate like how much time and detail they spend on, on their work as the oversight committee. So, Dr. Baker, what did you?
I was going to say the same thing. They're very diligent about reading the documents and about looking at the numbers and asking great questions. So, yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, Maria and Mike, roll call vote?
Estee Wells.
Aye.
Estee Lawson.
Aye.
Estee Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diosa Locom.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right. We are on to 12.3, which was moved to action and that has to do with the 2021 plan for educational services for expelled students.
So this is something that is required that we submit to the county office of education. I think, believe it's every three years. And I want the board to understand, we are not in the practice of expelling students. We are not in the practice of doing that. So what this indicates is what we do prior to getting to that stage, but we as the board for the last, I say, I want to say eight years have not done any expulsions at all. We definitely have had our opportunity program where we have our kids go and have a different setting. There's some other counseling services involved, some other family services involved for the family. But I want to really assure the board and those of you who have been on the board for years know that we don't go down this direction. We do everything that is here prior to doing anything like that. And as I said, we have not expelled a student, I think, within the last eight to 10 years. But it's something that we need to have, the county needs to have on file and they send it to the state.
All right. Any questions about the plan?
And just to let you, no good comes from expelling a student. No good comes from suspending a student either. So we're very in tune with that. And we've been through this for many years, especially for board members who have been with us for quite, for several years now. We've had these conversations over and over and some of you may remember, there was a time when it seemed like every other board meeting, we're doing a closed session regarding this, but we, nope, we got away from that.
Yes, I remember when I first came on the board, we did have sessions about student expulsions and student suspensions and the board, along with district staff and principals and teachers and others have worked really hard to, to do a much better job with all of that. Kids need to be in school as we know.
That's right. That's right. That is right.
All right. Um, let's see. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Maria and Janet, roll call vote please.
Estee Wells.
Aye.
Estee Lawson.
Aye.
Estee Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diosa Locom.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay. So we're on to board and superintendent reports. Who would like to go first?
I, yeah, go ahead, Cecilia.
Um, I really just watched the Little Mermaid Jr. From the Kennedy musical and that was such an excellent thing to do. It brought some really bad timings, but then also some really good things came out of it. So I was really pleased and thank you to all the, you know, parents that coordinated, the teachers that put all this together. And of course the awesome students, because it was so cute to see them all just, you know, thrive acting their piece. So on top of, you know, doing their virtual or maybe in-person assignments, you know, it's a lot to remember to put this musicals together. So it was really nice to see, um, you know, such a, a nice musical put together. So that, that's the only thing I have. Thank you.
Well, I saw the show too. But so I, we had LCAP last night. Dr. Baker had mentioned it before. Three hours flew by, very well spent. It was on LCAP and also ELO. We looked at some of the, the extended learning opportunity funding too, and how that'll be used. So that's it.
I'm looking at Maria because I think the only thing I have to report on is something that we did together. So I don't know if you would like to report out on that.
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay. So last week Maria and I sat on the, um, the district's website and mass communication committee. And that was Kyle, I don't know how many of us were there. Was it 16 of?
Yeah, 16.
Yeah, of administrators, parents, teachers, uh, staff from the district office and then Maria and I, and we heard proposals from five vendors, including our current vendor. And it was, it was a long day with a lot of great information, a lot of really good feedback from everybody. It was kind of, um, thinking from all different angles because we all experienced the website and the mass communications from, from different perspectives. So I thought that was a great mix of people. And then I know Kyle and Jorge reached out to two of those vendors to get some more questions answered that the committee had come up with. And I believe to get some quotes also Kyle from those two.
Yes, we, we received the two quotes from the two vendors that we, that we pulled from the group of five.
And there were some great options between the five of them. So I'm looking forward to seeing what Kyle and Jorge bring to Dr. Baker and then to the board as the recommendation. So that's all I have to report on.
And I, I totally agree with what Janet said. It was a very well put together group. The other thing I did was attend the kickoff for mental health awareness month for the county and they have some wonderful programs that our families should be able to participate from meditation out in the woods to just cooking, just lots of wonderful things. And you know, this has been a really hard year on everybody. And I know it's teacher appreciation week, but I would also like to say thank you to our administrators because they've also put in a lot of work. And I think, you know, many times we just don't see all the stuff that they do. So thank you to everybody.
All right. So I did want to say, I also saw the Little Mermaid and Marissa and Clara happened to be visiting and they were in a number of musical productions themselves. So we had a lot of fun sitting on our couch watching it. So thank you, Mike, to your daughter and all the other students. They were amazing. Thank you to the teachers. It was like you said, Cecilia, it was just so uplifting, you know, it was really fun. And I was thinking, I thought it was almost harder to do it virtually than it would have been to do in person. The coordination that was done in the little boxes and everything was really amazing. So anyway, thank you for that. I think we all needed a little musical fun this past weekend. I did attend with Dr. Baker and Jorge, had two superintendent coffees, one at Kennedy and one at North Star. And those are always so good. I mean, we have learned so much from parents and staff at these Wednesday coffees. And as we said, you know, it's helped, I think, Dr. Baker and team pivot, you know, where we've needed to pivot. So I just want to say a shout out to all the people who make the effort to go and thank you, Dr. Baker, for making the effort to have that happen. We had some equity committee meetings, the LCAP meeting. And then I've had a couple of CSBA meetings and I did want to say a special thank you to Janet and Maria for spending your day, your Friday at the vendor workshop. So thank you for volunteering for that. I think that's really important. So we get the best website. So thank you for doing that. All right, Dr. Baker?
A lot of the same items that have already been mentioned, with the exception of one that I want to give you a heads up on. And thank you Maria, Torin, Torin Slocum. He is going, I, I believe it's the, they put on Facebook, I, I don't know if it's once a month with the North Fair Oaks area and then Garfield and Taft and Hoover, where it's kind of a Facebook webinar where they have guests that come and talk about certain subject areas. And what I asked Warren is I wanted to really get out and speak to our Hispanic population about coming back to school in the fall and how important it is and how ready we are. We have a lot of students that are still on distance learning and want to make sure that they truly understand that we are ready, we're open, we will now, but we will, we'd be full blown starting in August. And I want to answer any questions that they may have. So that is happening, I believe on the 20th. I think it's Thursday, the 20th. I'm not sure about the time. It's either six or seven. I'm not sure. But I'll find out and I'll give you that information. I think it's so important to make them aware that, you know, teachers, staff, principals, all of us are anxiously awaiting for August to come, to come back to us somewhat normal school year and want to give them all the information, let them ask all the questions that they may have and move this forward. So that is going to take place in a couple of weeks. And I think Jorge and I have a, a meeting coming up with, is it Mart, Marcy? Is it Marcy her name?
One is Marcy and one is Marahe.
I think it's Marcy that's going to meet with me, myself and Jorge. So look forward to that. And also I may ask to see if anybody wants to join me on that who speaks Spanish, because all done in Spanish with English translation. So I, I see a couple of board members that may be interested, one of you or two of you to, especially one of you who has children in our schools, uh, to reinforce to the parents that things are great. I mean, come on back, you know, we're ready. And also going to give them information about summer school so that they have that too.
Yeah. So, so yeah, I was thinking of you when Dr. Baker mentioned this idea to me. I thought you would be a perfect person to join because you could speak from your parent perspective as well as living in the neighborhood, right? And then Maria, of course, you know, you also know all the families and everything. So I think that would be reassuring for our families to have you guys there.
Yeah, I was really happy to hear that this was happening when John mentioned on our one-on-one. So I, I do appreciate, John, that you reached out to Warren Slocum and that this is happening for our families here in the Bay side. So I appreciate it and I will be happy to join.
Okay. Actually, it happened because, you know, on the one-on-ones, I think Mike, I have my, my, my one-on-ones. It's Mike and Maria together, because you know, I could do two of you at a time. And Mike, I think you had left the meeting already and I saw Warren in the background. This was last week and I said, Warren, I need some help. What can you do? And right away here comes Marcy with the email, you know, uh, this is what's going to happen. It's going to happen this date, this time. And, and so we're meeting. So I, I was glad that we caught Warren and he was in the background there waving.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So information we've had, we have three, 16.1, two and three all have to do with our charters and their second interim financial reports. Any questions on those or any comments? Thank you Priscilla and your team. You guys do a great job. Really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And then 16.4, our contract update, credit card summary. Any questions there? Alrighty. Correspondence? Okay. Other business suggested items for future agenda? All right. Board agenda calendar. I know we have our retreat this Friday. That's a little different and and I know it's an off day for staff and parents, but certainly anybody's welcome to join Dr. Baker and the board to talk about mission values, vision.
Right.
We'll do that, what, 11 to 12:30?
11 to 12:30. Yes.
And then from 1 to 2:30, we'll have a closed session. So you'll get a half an hour for break for lunch, board members. Okay. And then on the KINT awards are, you know, I forgot to mention that. So four to six, and we are being recognized for equity work, equity work. Thank you, Dr. Montez, for putting all that information together. And I think all of you have gotten the link. So you can just zoom, join the Zoom.
We have some students attending also from our student voice and their parents, which I think is just so exciting.
Wonderful. Oh, I'm so happy to hear that. That's great. That's great. Okay. So anything else, Eliana, that we need to know about on the agenda or the, yeah, the calendar?
I don't know.
And as a reminder, we're meeting the last three Wednesdays of June. Lots of LCAP. This is going to be on the agenda a lot, as will Priscilla with the budget.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we're ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Cecilia?
Second.
Maria, seconds. And I would imagine we're all in favor of that. So, all right, look at us before 8:30. That's amazing.